Members. Hope you enjoy your time. And be appoint chair and co-chair.
You need, someone needs to make a motion to appoint a chair.
I make a motion, we appoint Pam as chair.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Dawn? Can he hear us?
Can Dawn, I don't think he can hear anything.
Can you hear Dawn?
I can hear, yes.
You can vote if you'd like. That is really loud. Did you, did you hear what we were voting on?
I got it, yes, yep.
Are you all set?
Yeah.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Been a long day.
No, that's okay. Um, opposed? Alrighty. Um. Yep. Um, I would like to appoint Leslie Dyer as co-chair. Make a motion. One more. All in favor? Dawn? Um, all opposed? Okay.
Welcome.
Uh, number two, approve agenda. Yes. You are on the agenda, um, under seven E. Yes, we have an addition to the agenda. Ally? Yep. Um, should I say what the additions are so people know? Okay. Yeah, we have, um, two additions, three additions to the agenda. Under committee and department reports and appointments, we have seven E housing and seven F department public works. And under new business, we have, uh, little license renewal sandbox. Okay, so, all in favor?
Hold on.
Up for the B. Yeah, the motion will prove, okay, all in favor? Okay, um. Approve the minutes from the June sixth meeting, which seemed like, ooh, a long time ago. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second? All in favor? Oh, wait a minute. Um, so, these guys weren't here. Dawn, Dawn has to be you three. Dawn, Dawn's voting now on the agenda, sorry. So we'll do all right, yep.
Yes, okay, to approve the minutes.
Yep. Uh, proven signs treasurer's warrant, number two, motion please.
So moved.
Second? Anybody have a second?
Second.
Yep, all in favor? Communications. A thank you letter from Lifeflight of Maine.
This was from the donation that the town made of a thousand dollars for Lifeflight.
Okay, uh. Notice from attorney regarding motion to reconsider.
So this is the final act. Hurricane Island Foundation filed a motion to reconsider the court's decision made May 30th, 2023. The motion was reviewed by the panel that decided the original appeal and the motion to reconsider was denied. So, I think this is the final.
This is it?
Final.
Good, that didn't take long. Well, good.
Four years?
Finally.
Really, gosh. A letter from Isle Borough Select Board.
Uh, this was sent to the Vinyl Haven Board of Selectmen. I think they just wanted to make you aware of this resolution. That, um, they're aware of wind power projects offshore. And it's not that they don't support them, but they want certain things to be addressed. Um, in that process. So I think this is just to make the Vinyl Haven Selectmen aware of this resolution by the Isle Borough Select Board.
Can we make a resolution like this?
If you want to.
Because I think this is good. I think this is.
Yeah, it was well worded.
Yes.
I read it. Um. I thought, thought it would be a good thing we did the call too.
Where's Matt? Do you know?
Matt, Matt's point, she is worth.
Okay. Is this just, um, one town doing this, are they inviting people to join them or?
I think it's just letting us know what they're doing.
Yeah, it didn't come with any letter of explanation. It was just this, uh, in an envelope addressed to the Vinyl Haven Board of Selectmen.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think from my knowledge of any of this stuff, I think there are a few other towns that are doing things like this, but I guess where we're an island, they sent it to us.
Yeah. No, I'm glad they did. Um, so what, what do you think, Marjorie?
Well, it's really up to you as the.
I mean, do you think we should use this as a template for what we would want to do? Guys, you like the wording there? Doing it right.
Um. Maybe we could put some stronger wording on around the fisheries part of it where that affects us, um, more so than Islesborough, but, um.
Yeah.
That would be my only add to it. I thought it was, um, I say, going to the point, uh.
Yeah, they just say consider impacts on walleye and fisheries. So we could have something a little more substantive than that. Do you have anything you do? Uh, do you want to table this and?
Be a table and I just think.
Yeah, and we can discuss it at the next.
We really need more information.
Um.
I didn't hear, he said need more information.
Marjorie, would you be willing to reach out to? The Isle Borough Select Board Chair? Or Town Manager?
Well, I know the Town Manager, I can call her, Janet, yeah.
Okay, so we'll table this till the next meeting, okay? Moving on, speakers from the floor. Seeing none. Um, number seven, committee and department reports and appointments. A, appoint municipal officials. So, do we do this all in one? One payment? Have ambulance director Ryan, is it Nizalak? Handle control officer, James Knowlton, assessor Travis School. CEO Fay Grant, E nine one one municipal coordinator. Et cetera, Mark Candage, emergency managing, management director Mark Candage. Direct deputy emergency management director Ryan Nizalak. Tax collector Dallin Candage, fire chief Mark Candage, general assistance administrator Marjorie Stratton. Deputy general assistance administrator, Deborah Young, harbor master James Knowlton, deputy harbor master Peter Gasparini. Health officer Jennifer Desmond, local plumbing inspector, LPI Fay Grant. Director of Public Works Millsu Martin, tax collector Marjorie Stratton. Deputy tax collector Dallin Candage, treasurer Marjorie Stratton. Deputy treasurer Dallin Candage, town clerk Dallin Candage and road commissioner Millsu Martin. So do we have to make a motion to?
Motion to be accepted, all on one vote.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Downtown project update and other grant proposals.
Hi, I'm gonna do a, hi everyone and welcome new select board members. Um, so, um. Uh, I'm just gonna do a quick downtown project overview and update and. As always, I don't necessarily need to apologize for repeating, um, but some of it will be repetitive to, to members that, um, have heard this, um, before. And, um, just to let folks know, um, we did just, um, have a downtown project public. Um, community conversation event that was held at the school cafeteria on June 28th and it. Um, was definitely well attended. We weren't really sure how many people to expect, but there, I think at the end, there is definitely over a hundred people there. Um, which was, which was really good to see. Um, and there were definitely a lot of, um, questions about, about the project. So I'm just gonna do a real quick overview. I invite, um, new members, um, if you have questions and want to follow up with me or Marjorie about the project. I'm always happy to sit down and talk. The plans for the first phase of the project are right in the meeting room there, so, um, you can, you can take a look. Um, the project is quite comprehensive and extensive. It goes from the ferry terminal, um, up to Water Street. And there are really three phases to the project, not timeframe wise necessarily because they're integrated. Phase one, uh, melds into phase two and to phase three, but they're all funded by different federal funders. So we have to kind of for the, the administrative side, keep them sort of distinct for the, for the funder's perspective. So they each have, um, separate project components and different requirements for each funder. So the one, the designs that are in the, in the meeting room right now are for phase one. And that includes, um, replacing the water main from High Street to Water Street. And that's, that's in collaboration and, uh, funding, with funding support through the water district. Um, and then, um, the stormwater system, which is essentially non-existent, as we can see from the puddling, um, that always happens downtown. Or should I say flooding in certain occasions, um, that stormwater system is going to be, uh, built slash rebuilt. Um, sidewalks from the ferry terminal up to, uh, Windy Way. Redesigning the road, elevating it in some places and really focus on a lot of safety improvements where it's hard to see. Uh, where people are going too fast, um, cor- the corner, uh, around Windy Way, um, difficulty seeing, um, coming on, onto High Street. And then there are also some sewer climate adaptations and those are related to a sewer climate adaptation plan. That the town, um, had done, I think in 2018 or 2019. And that suggests all sorts of components to improve the sewer, um, infrastructure. To make it more resilient to flooding, to make it more resilient to sea level rise, um, storm surge, other, other aspects of, uh, things that, that should be, um. Uh, addressed. So that, those things will be, um, taken care of for the most part in the first phase. The second phase of funding, um, we're gonna redo both boat launches, the downtown and the fish plant. Um, the parking lots will get redone, um, in terms of the bulkheads, um, that need to, all the bulkheads that need to be replaced. Um, some improvements, um, based on, um, you know, what folks who are using those, uh, that infrastructure want to see. Um, and then trying to accommodate, um, or, um. You know, really try to put in some sort of, um, mitigation strategies for flooding in the, in the downtown parking lot. Another part of this is the relocation of the water district office, um, and the, the current conversation with the water district is a potential, um. Relocation to a new, as of yet, um, constructed building at the wastewater treatment facility. These are all conversations that are happening. Um, nothing is, nothing is, uh, set in stone. There are no actual, you know, written agreements yet around this. We are sort of holding off until we have, um, uh, the notice to proceed from the funder and then we can begin exploring. And then in addition to this, or sort of any amenities that might be part of the project, like are there some granite benches in certain places for people to sit down on? That was something that was identified, um, by the stakeholders during the downtown master plan process. So that would be funding, um, in phase two. And then phase three, um, is going to do some additional stormwater, uh, management components. Especially coming down, um, off of High Street, um, into Main Street. Um, and more sewer climate adaptations and then also extending the sewer, um, from where it leaves off, which I think is like around West Reeds. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong. And then, um, all the way down to the, um, Fisherman's Co-op, uh, property slash parking lot. Um, so those are all the project components, um, just real, real high level overview of those, um. And the, the project is really designed around meeting certain goals, um, and these goals were what were identified in the downtown master plan. Um, and there, if you haven't read the plan, um, there's a summary of it, which is like 22 pages. That's available on the town website. If you love to read and, uh, enjoy a good read, um, the whole plan is around 200 pages. Uh, so it's definitely an interesting read, um, but gives you the full sort of comprehensive about the process and the information gathered. And, um, just what was recommended in terms of, um, all of the different infrastructure improvements and, um, ordinance changes or recommendations. So, um, project funding, um, all of these grants require some level of local match. It might be 20% local match. It might be 50% local match and local match is essentially any funding that is not federal. So it could be town reserves. It could be contribution from the water district. It could be state grants. So in this case, um, the town match, um, over however many years, I think it's probably, I don't want to say it's close to a decade, but it could be. Um, is 1.7 million and that's been, uh, mostly reserve funds. I think there was one general fund allocation. Um, and then the total grant funding, um, in terms of federal grants is almost 4.3 million. Um, there's, uh, almost a million in state grants and then there's, uh, 500,000, uh, from contribution toward the project. Wa- uh, for the water main from the water district. So at the end of the day, there's no bonding on this project. Um, it's all essentially funds that have been generated through grants and local match. Meaning town, state or partner contribution. Um, project, uh, timeline, this is ever-changing. You know, if you go back to some of the initial, um, project schedules. You know, different delays in design and accommodating stakeholder needs. And now we're experiencing a delay due to securing easements that are required in order for the town to be able to. Uh, do work on people's property as well as installing infrastructure that's out of the town right of way. So federal funding has a plethora of requirements, which we all know, um, but there's, you know, all these legal components that must be adhered to in order to. Receive the funding. So we're just going through that process. It's sometimes slow because we need to negotiate with property owners. Um, but we're getting closer and our original thought of, you know, going to construction this fall. We're gonna go to bid this fall and the plan will be to break ground early, in, early as possible, um, in the spring of next year. And that's gonna start with the water main project and, um, move on to stormwater. Obviously, we're going, you know, below ground before we do anything above. So, um, again, this is a project schedule likely, you know, could possibly could change. Um, but, you know, we're just trying to move forward as quickly as possible and be as adaptable as possible. Um. Again, I'm happy to share more one-on-one conversations. Um, there's a ton of information on the town website. If you go, um, to any of these things, you, here's the URL. You can look under the government tab and you'll see downtown project, or you can just go in that search button. That's in the upper right-hand corner and, and just cert, put in downtown project and you'll get the page. All the documentation of, um, fact sheets and, uh, current designs, um, cost. Um, there's also a monthly, uh, stakeholder engagement meeting. Any members of the public are invited to attend. It's particularly targeted toward the business and property owners along Main Street as well as, um, you know, town officials and folks from the water district. So it, um, that's all the, the project information I have. So I don't know if folks have any questions, uh, right now about that. Um, like I said, I'm happy to, to meet with you whenever to discuss and Marjorie certainly, um, the same. So I don't know if anyone has any questions.
Any questions? Uh, Gabe, could you just give a brief, uh, explanation of the recent, um, CRP grant application?
Yeah, definitely. I'm totally prepared to do that. Um, so, um, so just so folks are aware, the, um. The last year, um, the, the town, um, enrolled in what's called the Community Resilience Partnership. It's a, it's a, a program of the governor's office of policy innovation in the future. And it really, um, is targeted towards helping communities, uh, plan for and fund resilience-based, um, projects. So it could be around energy efficiency. It could be around, um, adaptation to, uh, flooding, storm surge, uh, maybe extreme heat. It could be wildfires, um, you know, any sort of, um, resilience-based, um, hazard that, that communities are trying to address. This program provides grant funding to main communities to help them, uh, address those challenges. So, um, Vinyl Haven became enrolled. Last year, we received a $50,000 grant that went towards some federal match for the downtown project. This, um, year North Haven became, um, enrolled and they went through, um, an, an enrollment process. And during that process, they identified, um, several priorities. But one of them was to do some community education and outreach, really around like sharing information and resources. And opportunities around climate resilience and then energy sustainability was another one. So they wanted to say like, okay, if we work with Fox Island Electric Cooperative and Vinyl Haven, what are some things we can do to help? Um, build energy sustainability and look for, um, ways that we can support community members that want to do efficiency projects for, you know, business or home. So I just say that to present some context for this, which is, um, North Haven just applied to, to, um, the partnership. For collaborative grant with Fox Island Electric Cooperative and we pulled in Vinyl Haven. And the reason for doing that is because this is a mutually beneficial project, uh, for an LED street light conversion. And so the project really was aiming to, uh, reduce that overall energy consumption. And this was a project that was recommended by Fox Island Electric Cooperative. It's kind of what's considered like low hanging fruit in terms of energy efficiency. It's, um, you know, once you make the investment, the cost savings is tremendous, um, and it, and it has a very quick payback period. So, um, the goals of North Haven's grant are, um, this, you know, really reducing energy consumption, finding that cost savings. Trying to build more of a partnership with Fox Island Electric. And looking toward the future around more, um, energy affordability, sustainability. And then the, North Haven has a strong, um, education component in their grant. They have some training that's gonna be offered. Vinyl Haven, um, residents will be able to participate in that training if they'd like and, and as well as the sea level rise, uh, committee. So the total project cost that, uh, this, this, uh, for this project proposal was 146,295 dollars. The actual amount that the grant pays for is 123,246. So there's a difference there that is strictly related to Vinyl Haven's LED light conversion. Because North Haven has, um, I believe like 46 lights and Vinyl Haven has 144. So there's a cost that Vinyl Haven will need to pay, um, in order to take advantage of this grant, should it be funded. Which we won't know until September. That cost is 23,049 dollars. And again, that's strictly for the LED conversion. North Haven's covering all of the other costs. So, so the education component, everything that has to do with the LED light conversion on there. I'm, they're even, uh, contributing to Fox Island's time to put together, uh, some of the components that are required. Um, in order to move forward with the process. So this is the, um, annual, um, the operating, um, expense, uh, savings. That is projected by doing this conversion for Vinyl Haven's 144 lights. 22,415 dollars annual savings. So if you put that up against, um, the i- investment that Vinyl Haven would be required to make. It's, it's basically a year payback period that would be achieved. So you can see sort of the estimated cumulative savings over a decade is almost, you know, close to, um, you know, getting, getting up to 225,000. So it's relatively significant. And so you see the overall, uh, cost of the conversion on the right-hand side of the screen, uh, close to 85,000. Cost per unit, which is inclusive of, you know, all, all the things required to get to the actual install, 588, um, dollars per unit. And again, this is, this is just one, um, one estimate, uh, from the provider that was, uh, that North Haven was in communication with. So you'll see a 62% uh, energy reduction, uh, through this, this, uh, conversion. Should, should, uh, Vinyl Haven choose to go through with this. So, um, I won't go through all of these tasks, but just to get a sense of what, uh, North Haven is hoping. Is that this is a project that will begin if we are awarded the funds this September of this year and can culminate November of next year. With the install potentially happening in September and October of next year. So there's several things that need to happen in order for the install to actually take place. Um, but, but this would be, that would be the general timeline. Um, and so what, um, what we'd sort of like to do is we had to move forward with this sort of in-between, uh, you know, old board going out and new board coming in because of the grant deadline. There's no commitment to accepting this funding, um, if it comes in. In my mind, it's a no-brainer because it has this close to one-year payback period. Um, it's a great opportunity to just move forward with this, again, low hanging fruit, cost savings measure for the town. Um, and just thinking about, um, you know, what, what the commitment would be. Is that this could be, this funding could be appropriated in the next budget. It's not something that would need to come, we'd need to come up with before the next fiscal year. Um, but it would be good to know, um, if the board wants to move forward with it sooner rather than later. Just to have that sort of acknowledgement and commitment of, yes, we, we would like to do this project should the funding come through for North Haven. And I'll just say one last thing is North Haven is the fiscal administrator of this project. Um, it's not funding that's coming directly to, uh, Vinyl Haven. So it would be, um, a contribution that toward the cost of, uh, the install. And, uh, North Haven would be contracting with the installer. So that's my, that's my spiel on this. Um, no, nothing needed to be decided now, but I want to put it out there for consideration. So, um, at an upcoming meeting, it can be either discussed, uh, some more, or there can be some, um, either yay or nay on, um, should funding be received? If, if you want to move forward with this project. So any questions? Anything you want to ask while I'm here?
No, I think we're all, we all set.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gabe. We can put that, let's, uh, before August 31st, right? So. Move it to, table it to another.
We can do that next time, next time.
Or whatever.
First one in August or something.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Is that okay with everybody?
Fine with me.
Okay. Alrighty. Uh, seven C, ferry tariff advisory committee appointments. Chat and Cheryl Warren. Uh, seven C Berry Tariff Advisory Committee Appointments. Chat and Cheryl Warren.
Um, you did that batch of appointments.
Yep.
Um, last time I was not able to get ahold of Chat and Cheryl until after that meeting. So this is just a leftover. They would be willing to be appointed to the Berry Tariff Committee again.
Okay. So.
Motion to make a motion to approve Chat and Cheryl Warren's members of Berry.
All in favor? Okay. And Knox County Sheriff.
Josh was on vacation this week, so we'll have it.
Seven E Housing.
Thank you. For the new board members, maybe I'll just give you a little background on the housing committee. That's all right. You got, um, a report that we wrote for you all, but I got it to Lizzie late on Friday. So I don't think it got in your packet that you had over the meetings. How to kind of just read it. But the, I'm on the planning commission and we thought we could tap into some of the housing issues through the planning commission, but it became obvious that that wasn't possible. So I asked the select board to reappoint the housing committee. There had been a housing committee that didn't really accomplish anything in the past. I was on that one too. So we asked it to be reactivated and we've done a lot of work in the last two years. Kathy's on that committee and darling, um, Beckman and Chris, yeah, Chris and I. Um, Duncan Urquhart, oh, Hoover Brooks, myself. Um, and we've worked really hard for the last couple of years. Um, this report will tell you all the details of the things that we've been doing. Excuse my voice. We hired, uh, Mary Terry to do an assessment. So we actually know what the housing issues are. We know that not everyone who needs housing, especially the most desperate people, didn't fill out the housing assessment because they're couch surfing or didn't have homes or didn't have a mailbox or didn't pick up the survey. They were all over town. There were a lot, a lot of them available. But, um, over fifty percent of the people who answered the survey had problems finding housing regardless of income. Um, we also, um, did a lot of research on helping people find a way to stay in their homes and make their homes better. We, I got a grant from the, uh, Warren Foundation and we, um, did energy audits and air sealing for sixteen homes that just was completed. Um, Keith McPherson, who came out years ago with the Island Institute, I think Marjorie, you were involved in that years ago. Um, that was completed and everybody was very satisfied with the work he did. And he's making a report of additional work that's needed in some of the homes. Um, so we'll have a better sense of what's going on. We, we don't even really need to know people's names. So of course I know everyone's name because I organized the appointments. But just to have a sense of the condition of some of the homes that people own that they're living in and the problems that they're having. The one home couldn't even, uh, be, um, completed because of the furnace was malfunctioning and it was dangerous. We wouldn't have known that if he hadn't been there. And we were able to get that corrected. And the two people in that house are not well. And so to know that their furnace was malfunctioning and they were breathing bad air was really disturbing. So, um, we, we are, uh, determined to expand existing housing and, uh, improve housing. Um, the housing committee was extended at, before you gentlemen came on the board because we applied for a nonprofit status to become a nonprofit organization as other islands have to promote and, um, create housing in their island communities. We have gotten five oh-one C three nonprofit status and the select board. I actually have these for you. And there was a resolution from the previous select board saying that the, um, housing committee is very important to the community in creating housing for the community. So we got an exception to the, it's called safe harbor. But it does, safe harbor rule for housing and criteria under which you can create housing and be a nonprofit, but we got an exception for workforce housing. Which a few other island communities have done, but it's not easy. But we had some good, we had a really good lawyer. I got a grant for, uh, to hire the best lawyer in the state of Maine for housing. And he helped us through the process. So we're very grateful for that. So we are now a five oh-one C three organization called the Vinyl Haven Housing Initiative. And so our final report is the report that's in your packet. We're no longer going to be functioning as the housing committee. And if you want the housing committee to continue, I guess you'll have to create a new group because all of us are now on the board of the Vinyl Haven Housing Initiative. And we have a recommendation in this packet. Um, we spent a long time, uh, developing a relationship with Jason Bird of Pankwith. He very much wants to build out here, but the only site he can build on is where the net factory is because they have to have town water and sewer and they have to have a neighbor. So I hope he'll really, um, consider that opportunity. They're the only developer who's willing to build out here. They can build a lot of units. They wouldn't, it wouldn't cost the town anything. There'd be no money having to be raised from nonprofits in the community or from taxation or anything. So I really, we, I think we all really want and hope that you will really take this seriously. This is a great opportunity. We'll do our best as a nonprofit to create housing, but it's going to be a very heavy lift. Very, very expensive. We've got a lot of numbers and information about what it would cost to bring modular units out here. On the island transporter, what it costs to put in wells, roads, electricity. And it's, you know, as you all know, it's hugely expensive. So we're going to do our best, but Pankwith really is the very best option there is. Um, and I have copies of the, uh, our articles, of our purposes, if you'd like them. And I also have copies of the resolution for you too. I don't know what information you were given coming on the board of select them. So I'd like to give you these just so you have them for your information.
If you have any questions for us, Kathy and I are here to answer them. This is the purpose of the housing initiative, just so you have it. Actually. That's okay. We can share. Yeah. Maybe if Lizzie has one, it can go in. I don't think you have one.
I don't think I have that one.
But if you could put, you could maybe put it in the minutes. You said it, Ellen?
Um, I think so. Yeah, you have any questions for us?
Wanted to lift stuff over and kind of figure out what's going on before.
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've watched the old town meetings and gone back through. So I'm fairly, I've, we've talked, you know, several times about it. So fairly up to speed with that.
We'll be making, um, reports to you on an ongoing basis. So we can stay as in a partnership, hopefully with you all. And we really do hope to be able to work with the town.
Okay, thank you. Oh, seven F.
Just like we like it.
Right, exactly. Um, so just so you know, um, striping was expected to happen with the roads. Um, we've worked, worked wide. Obviously, you see the rain has been interfering with that. Um, he's working really hard to clear a spot and step in to get back out here. But obviously every day that it rains is a day he's not working. So I'm thinking maybe by December we'll some parking spaces and some handicap spaces and so on. Um, but, uh, he, he is really trying and as soon as he can get out here, he will. Um, and as soon as I can do some more crosswalks, we'll get the main street ones completed as well. I've started after the Fourth of July, we pumped the catch basin next to Carver's because it's been filling out and going out in the road so far. We're afraid people are going to get hurt or they're splashed or a car is going to hit that and go off the road. So it's filling up to the point like it was actually this morning or yesterday morning. We'll be pumping that out just as much as we can. And then we just run it down and behind Carver's and, you know, um, post offices. Really all I can do right now is broken. There's no, no way to fix it until the project takes place next year. Um, so it can see itself there with the garden halls. Um, and let's see, uh, parking enforcement. I, we've put up a bunch, a bunch of parking signs, um, all over town. There's still more that need to go up. But it's, it's hard to get pictures every day and emails and text messages and so on of people parking in front of the signs, behind the signs, on the sidewalk. Um, library is probably the worst. People pull up on the sidewalk by the cannon, run a book into the library, come back out. We really need to see if the, um, map can do some enforcement there for parking. Actually, we'll continue to be here. I think a few tickets might solve the problem and people will think about it. I mean, I could get myself a little golf cart and go, my tickets help myself, but rather than not.
Just get some warning.
Well, we had discussed a while ago, quite a while ago, the previous administration administrator, um, to get tickets. A booklet of tickets that we were supposed to get and we never did. No, you know, for parking.
So we have to supply those for Knox County?
Well, uh, but it was just something the town with my, with the, what I understood was they were going to be bought or get wherever they get them, where they come from. And they'd be given to the sheriff and he would just put them on the people's, I mean, just a parking ticket on your windshield wiper like they do anywhere.
Right. Right. And we talked about amounts and, but the main thing was the enforcement part of it.
We, but we never got even to the point of let's get the tickets and
Right.
I mean, I don't know.
But we didn't even have a cop at the time either. So that didn't help.
Well, Millie can get a golf cart and go around. And, and another thing too, that's so irritating of, of the people parking and the, going the wrong way on Main Street. It's just like, seriously, I know it may seem minor, but it's especially in the winter when it, they leave their lights on and you go to pull in and you can't see because they live there have lights on and I don't know. I think it's dangerous and
Snow off the road next to a sidewalk.
But anyway, Marjorie, what, I could tell you we're gonna I could see that.
Well, like everything, um, the administration of anything like this is more complex than what you think of, well, let's just give people tickets. Okay. So who's going to give the tickets? It should be, we hired somebody part-time and paid them quite a bit of money to do tickets. But then in terms of the office, you have to track the tickets, their number. And then you have to make sure that that person pays the ticket. We charge twenty dollars for a violation. Uh, and then if they don't pay the violation, you have to follow up. So there is a certain amount of administrative work that goes along with it. As well as, you know, having somebody that you either hire or, um, have a current employee, uh, do it. I don't know if, uh, the deputy, if he gives out a parking ticket, you still have the administrative work that you have to do in the town office to track the tickets, track whether or not they're paid and then follow up, you know. Uh, a lot of people just don't pay them. And then there's a lot of follow-up that, yeah, goes with it.
Well, is there a penalty if they don't pay them? The only, where's our authority there? If, if we issue a parking ticket and it remains unpaid, can we suspend a person's right to register a vehicle? Can, we don't have any real enforcement behind it at all. So, I mean, you have to take toll. Sound, sounds like it's a a lot more
I guess all I'm trying to say is that i- it's easy to say, let's give out a parking ticket. Let's have a, you know, let's enforce this. But there's, uh, there's more involved than just, you know, what you see on the surface.
But if people are packing illegally, wouldn't it be the sheriff's responsibility to say you're packing on the wrong side of the road? I mean,
I'd have to, um, check with, uh, Knox County Sheriff's Office. I believe the contract that we have with them says that they will enforce local ordinances.
Yeah.
So it would be a matter of following up with, uh, the patrol officer and a conversation.
Right. So you can talk to Knox County and Matt or whoever's going to be know what, what we can do because it is a problem.
Yeah, I, I mean, a lot of it's just creating unsafe conditions. That's, that's my real concern is pedestrians going out around vehicles that are on the sidewalk into the street.
Right.
Behind a parking spot, the vehicle, et cetera. It's not just the parking in a no parking spot. We made arrangements there and it's a safety issue.
Well, I know, remember a couple of years ago when there were like forty-nine no parking signs from the flagpole. I mean, just a couple there. Did you put a couple up there?
Yeah, just a couple there.
Yeah, okay. Is that working? People still parking there?
The flea market's a mess.
No, really. I have to come by there like.
I received a picture the other day, um, that I was forwarded, Marjorie. After can on the sidewalk, up on the hill, up on the mound, on the sidewalk. By the monument. Um, it's just, just so they could run in and, um, drop a book on. But there's a parking lot behind the library for that purpose. And then, and a rear entrance.
Well, I don't know what happened to the pre-COVID. Yeah, I mean, pre-COVID, remember we had a thing with the, whoever was running the uh, in charge of the flea market to put up the, we closed the street off between the field and the bandstand, that little place there. So people could park up in there, but nobody could drive down through. You did the one-way down through School Street. And, and it just seemed like there were a lot of, and people were encouraged to, to park down at the, uh, town, our old town garage too, the net factory, but I don't know what.
Human, human nature to
Do what you're not supposed to do.
Make it as less impactful as possible, meaning I don't have to walk.
Exactly.
I, I can walk twenty feet instead of a hundred yards.
Yeah.
That's just human nature, just.
But it, I mean, it, that seemed to help when we did that. But I don't know who's I mean, we kind of coordinated with whoever was doing the, running the flea market. So need a little bit of cooperation from them as well to maybe put up. Dan, you might remember, were you still? Did you have anything to do with the homes and?
Closing, um, the bandstand street.
But there was.
Yeah, we did talk about that.
Yeah.
We wanted the inside.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And that did seem to help.
I know when they do the, uh, car show there, we, we run them
Yeah.
signs and they close that section of road off.
Well, well, I don't know.
Marjorie, you think would be in what?
I didn't hear a directive at all yet.
Well, you're going to talk to the sheriff about Knox County, about packing tickets and packing in general.
And once some road closed down?
Well, no, just, it was during the flea market.
Is Kathy Morton?
Isn't she in charge?
Still doing the flea, taking care of the flea market. Maybe we should talk to her and see if she's willing to to take some just barriers and signs, no parking, close that street down during the flea market.
Well, it seemed that they, I don't know if they have a committee that I don't need it. So. So Millie, what, what exactly do you, would you prefer? What would you like us to recommend? To Marjorie or do you have any just?
Uh, I would, I mean, definitely the sheriff's department input to see what we can do. I, I understand that it probably creates a lot of extra work. I'm willing to help with that work. It's, you know, it's more about safety for pedestrians when it is anything in my book. And I, I think that we need to find some answers on, on how we can proceed down the right track.
Do we have signs up now?
There are some.
Yeah, there's, there's signs.
Why don't we just go ahead and wait and talk to Matt? Have him show up on the next Saturday when they have the flea market and just walk along and, and leave a whatever, get the plates and talk to the people and say, look, you can't pack. That'd be a stat, first stat, be simple. Yeah. Start with education, then move on to enforcement.
Well, that, that fixes the flea market, but I'm still concerned about the rest of the no parking issues around town.
Flea market's a big one though. If you went by there, say. Flea market is a big one, though. If you went by there Saturday, you would have seen the mess. In all honesty, I think pedestrians cause a lot of their own issues as well, just by not paying attention, not using crosswalks. Stepping out between cars like they shouldn't, even if people are parked legally.
Letting their kids run.
I mean, we can give. Give the car a list of the high areas that you're seeing people, they don't know and tell him.
As long as it's part of Knox County's responsibility. And if it's. It probably is, but that's something Marjorie is just gonna check off.
Well, like they said, they will, they will help enforce our ordinances and I would think the no parking.
It's just like.
Yes, sir.
I think there's such a thing as a private for profit company that issue ticket. I know a lot of developers hire these companies and that, man, you want some tickets written. So I don't know if they were for municipalities also, um and they're probably writing something to you to like regret it at some point.
Well, that that goes back to administrative issues.
They can't, they do all of that. Oh, interesting. Okay. All right. Well, let's move on. Anything else? Okay, thanks, Millie. Well, we'll see, see how it goes then. Um. On the new business, can can we move um C. Jeff Tolman Music Award proposal up to A? So these folks can.
Yes.
Do their thing and mosey on home.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, Ally?
Hi, so thank you for reading our proposal and taking a look at our insurance policy. Um one thing I wanted to start with as I was perusing our proposal is um. The first asterisk on the second page where we said, similar to the Fourth of July, we would request that all cars be moved out of parking lot by five. I think that's a little overkill. I'm used to our um traditional event, which start at noon time. So we need that evening time to set up where we're not gonna be starting until five. I think it would be a lot to ask to have people move out of parking lot twenty-four hours before the event. Um so, you know, that would obviously be a little later than five, probably in the morning sometime. Um but basically, we just wanted to attend this meeting to answer any questions you guys have. Um after reading the proposal, any concerns you have, any ideas you have. Um so that's why we attended tonight, just to hope to answer questions.
Yeah, I think when I read it, that was the only thing that I saw was. Like you said, a full twenty-four hours, so we're like Fourth of July. You know, we set the tents up and everything in the evening and then the vents in the morning and then by the next. You know, by one o'clock, it's it's open again.
Yeah, I mean, we we wanna have as minimal impact on the community as a whole as far as. Um accessibility and all that as we can. Um that's why we are shortening our event. Typically, we go from noon to dusk is what we typically done. Um out of respect for hotel, people at the hotel, business owners. We kind of came up with a five to nine um to start and just see how it goes. Um. I think as a group, our biggest concern that we've discussed is alcohol consumption. We don't furnish alcohol, we don't sell alcohol, um but we all know that that is gonna be a potential issue. And so um, you know, as far as open alcohol containers, as far as um. Any injuries that could result as far as alcohol consumption goes. Um I have got a call into an attorney to really nail down what our liability would be personally. As a nonprofit organization hosting this event. If we have this event insurance, it doesn't specifically negate alcohol coverage, but it also doesn't endorse it. So I think it could probably be argued either way. I did do some research um. Like Maine has a dran shop law, which is basically alcohol liability. And that doesn't seem like it would pertain to us if we're not furnishing or selling alcohol. But it would be kind of like a BYOB, even if there's no signage that says BYOB, people are gonna. Right, um and you know. Don't any illegal behaviors, like underage drinking or drinking and driving, any of that. Um so we wanna make, be as responsible as we can as far as that goes. So um. I think we also wondered about police presence at the event, if that would be something the town would require. Or if, you know, if we would be required to pay for the police to be there to cover that event, um what your thoughts would be on that, but. Um, yeah.
Can you also add no dogs, please?
Oh, yeah.
Because. I'm gonna bring that up later, but.
Um I will say that I I don't remember we mentioned it in here. Um we do plan on having the Big Lions tent that was put up at the Fourth of July. Um there as well as like some smaller tents for concessions. Um the biggest thing we'll probably do would be just basically hamburgers, hot dogs, just some.
Water, soda.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And um, you know, so there would be grilling going on and then the electrical hookup at the old fire hall. With a stage of some sort being placed pretty much where the concessions are during the Fourth of July events. Um, I don't know how many people here remember the street dances. But um that's kind of sort of the vibe we're hoping to go for. Um I know Bill has a lot of experience with Lung Fest on North Haven, which is a similar event, which is held on community front free. Um, so he's got a lot of experience with it, you know, and. I did speak with Sarah Crossman, the owner of the hotel, and she thought nine P M was a reasonable end time. Um.
Right.
I did, you you did see that I, we've mentioned the flea market field as a second option. I think that would have a lot more impact on. People in just in homes, so it would be louder within more neighborhood proximity than the mainstream. It's gonna be loud no matter what, but. Um, yeah.
How would you get electricity there?
Um, so my brother is Joe Bickford and he's up on electric and he said that. The concessions always get power from the old fire hall or in that general.
No, I mean, in if you were up in Webster's Field.
Yeah, I think there's, they get power from that. There's a box on the pole where they do like the Christmas lights.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's there's power there and there's a dance in itself.
So Bill, how do you handle um alcohol, alcoholic beverages? I do not.
Me personally.
Yes. No, at your event.
Well, it's different. It's been different with Lung Fest, which was a music festival at least to do it, but Mullins had part on North Haven. And the street dance, which is done downtown North Haven. And um it's much more strict on the street, but you know, Main Street and where. The town basically asks the police officer to essentially be there for the night for the event. And kind of not patrol, but just hang out and not walking through the crowd and something, you know. Total present, but just being a presence there and being on hand when needed. Um and that's the biggest, that's been the biggest um, I would say preventative measure that the town's ever passed. And I think they're still doing it that that way this year. They also uh park the EMS uh vehicle, so the the ambulance there as well.
Right.
And whoever EMT drivers on call, kind of hanging out there and.
Yeah.
Um.
Which that was the same at Charlotte's, the the ambulance was there, wasn't it?
I don't remember us ever having an ambulance there, actually.
Okay.
I think we used to when I was sort of shopping in ago, but that was.
So sometimes Josh comes down. Or, I mean, would would we need a couple, like two?
I think we would all feel better as hosts of the event if there were a police presence, just to mitigate.
Right.
Potential.
Well, assuming we have our own deputy, but maybe, I don't know if we. Would ask Josh to come down to the event, so there'd be two guys kind of walking around.
There are also regular announcements that that are made, you know, when the bomb, just like, you know.
I see you over there drinking a beer.
And the nineteenth is a Saturday, so Matt should be here.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, one of those essentials. You kind of have to be present and look for the troublesome real trouble.
Right.
Person that kind of left the rest. Hello.
Yeah. Guys, so. So you're asking for permission to use the parking lot? That's what you'd prefer, correct? I know we used to think it was great when we could, kids always had fun and.
Street dances were fun.
Four hours. Yep.
And I will say this, this would be largely um youth attendant. Because we have so much youth musical talent.
Right.
Bill now, that you know, it maybe wouldn't be so conducive to be partying and drinking and, you know, it's just kids there. Wanna show off their musical talent and our community has so much of that, that we just really wanna bring this event back and felt like this would be a good.
Yeah. Yeah, well, it's fine with me. Do we have to make a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay, um I would make a uh entertain a motion to have the Jeff Tolman Music Award. Um, event, musical rampage. To be able to use the town parking lot on Saturday, August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three. From five to nine P M. Second. All in favor?
Something thing uh talking about clearing the parking lot the night before, 'cause I do a lot of setting the tents up for the lines. That will will want to put up the night before, so there'll have to be at least spots open up.
Yeah. Yeah. Then close it down when it gets closer to.
Yeah, so there's something like that.
So, um as far as logistics moving forward, would you guys recommend us to speak with Marjorie? Um to to get direction on.
Yes.
When we can start to place phones and put signage up and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
Me or Millie?
Millie.
Whatever's more.
Okay.
Is that okay, Millie?
Yes. Okay. Well, we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Oh, it's great. It's exciting.
Good cause and it's a great idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right.
See you, see y'all later.
Said you just had to stand up for a month.
Yep, no, that's fine.
You can all can listen to my stomach growl.
I'm gonna sing.
You're gonna sing intermission?
I think you should.
Marjorie has a very nice voice.
She sang with the chicks. Remember?
Maybe she should get back with the chicks. But only two of them.
Um, the donations page, you're not gonna read through all those, are you? It's just for FYI.
No, I did the other one as because I felt that it was the proper way to do, but no, this um.
I just figured it was an FYI.
Yeah.
So we can. I think you have to accept an appropriate as.
Donation.
As provided or as presented.
I was gonna wait for lad.
Yeah.
Come back in for a second here, so.
The totals are at the end, I think that would be a good basis for the most.
Well, okay. Um, Millie, just to, oh, okay, I'll wait for you. You're gonna stay through to the end of the meeting? Okay, thank you. Um, you all sat well up?
Yep.
Okay, um. So we will do, let's see, that was uh A, so we will put donations to B. And move the liquor license to C and then D will remain the same. Does that sound right? Okay. Um, so on the new business donations. So we need a motion to accept. Uh the donations. In total, am I doing this right, Marjorie? In total of seventeen thousand four hundred fifty-two dollars and sixty-three cents. To the library, the swap shop, fire department, ambulance equipment and ambulance training. So moved. Yeah, she's, she moved, so moved, so we need a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Alrighty. Moving on to C liquor license renewal for skull. And these are renewals, so things probably. All set, just accept. Yep. I think just the motion to approve and then, yep. So can we um make a make a motion to accept the liquor liquor license renewal for skull?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? And let's see.
Is this the one you want us to sign?
Yes, please.
This is. This is the rest of that one.
That's the rest of skull. Yeah, I can just take that. And then this is.
The sandbar. Was there a motion on that sandbar?
Nope, I should have done them both together and I didn't. I'm sorry. And make a motion to accept the liquor license renewal for the sandbar.
Second.
All in favor? Sorry. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And moving on to nine D, C A I Technologies Proposal.
I don't know if Bill had a chance to read the proposal. It's quite a lot. Um I would point you. Um to page twenty, which just has a very short list of the deliverables. Um this was voted at town meeting to appropriate money and to uh approve a three-year contract. The goal, the major goal in my mind is to update our tax maps, the parcel data. They haven't been updated since twenty fourteen. Uh and when I, when we hired a new assessor. Uh he and I had many conversations about it and we looked and got uh several. Um. Proposals, ideas about what to do. And all of our conversations kept coming back to this uh C A I Technologies. Most of the mid-coast towns have gone with this company, including Rockland, Camden, Rockport, North Haven. Um, it seemed like a lot of money to us. We were a little stunned. You know, the the total amount of this contract is two hundred and sixty-seven thousand plus. But we also got another estimate from another similar company and their estimate was almost exactly the same. It was like two hundred and eighty thousand. So I feel comfortable in recommending this proposal. As I said, we did have a vote at town meeting to uh use our, what are called ARPA funds, their COVID funds. Uh we have about a hundred and twenty thousand, so we won't have, we didn't, won't have to raise any money the first year. For the second year, we'll have to raise a little bit of money, but I think we're in a good position to just move forward with this contract. I'm uh asking that you approve it. I think we've really done our homework. And um we really need to begin this work of updating our parcel maps.
Just, I mean, to bring me up to speed.
Mm-hmm.
Um. What, why is the need to update? What do they need to be updated? I mean, the property hasn't really changed. Nothing's moved. I know that they're not great, what we have now. I I know that the the way things are lined up, I've I've been on there with Ethan looking at his property. That that he's interested in and I know that some, that they're not as accurate as we would like them to be. Um but.
So actually, they do change every year. Every year, there's at least a split.
Right.
A sale.
Right.
That changes the tax maps.
Right.
And normally, uh in my experience, you would update those tax maps based on uh splits. And some say. Uh, splits and some sales that change the character of a lot. You do that annually and that had always been done annually or at least once every two years. Um, so I don't, I'm not placing any judgment on anybody. Uh, but it hasn't been done since twenty fourteen. Obviously, there are a lot of changes that have happened since twenty fourteen. And even before twenty fourteen, there were some inaccuracies. Uh, the new technology will correct everything uh and bring us into the. Twenty-first century, if you will, uh, in terms of data collection and uh availability of data. It will help our uh co-re enforcement officer, it will help our planning board. Uh, could very well help Millie when she's uh looking, you know, we could, we can put our um location of our culverts.
Help with the main street project, I'm sure, trying to get easements and and doing, going through.
I think it will help more than I even realized. And the other thing that I've done is have conversations with the G I S coordinator at Knox County. Um, because I'm not.
What does G I S stand for? That brand just drive me nuts because.
I know, but so many.
Intelligence system, something like that.
Yeah. Um, and she has helped me a great deal.
Global intelligence systems is what?
Global in in from.
Information, whatever it is, what what does it mean? What do they do?
It's just, it's it's layered maps, basically.
Okay.
Um, like whenever you go on this, online to something and you have, you know, let's say it's a tax map, whatever, you can click on it.
It's a geographical information system.
Our online tax maps, I was on the other day and it is so funky. I could not find the property I was looking for, it was just really hard to look things up. And I think this is.
But it it is a lot of money, which is why I'm asking the question.
Yeah.
That's why I'm asking the question. I'm new to the game, so.
Have you used like Google Maps?
Oh, yeah.
And because it would be like an aerial.
Yeah.
Satellite mapping, but you'd be able to select a property. Um, see information about that property. Um, I know like for us in the office, if we had to notify a butters, you can click one button, it would generate the letter and mailing to a butters. I mean, I think it's.
Parameters, it only shows certain layers, right, information, you can have it as detailed or as not as you want.
And I mean initially, it didn't have me left, but the maintenance fee, I think is what, five thousand a year after?
That's what they've said, I mean, even. Without going to these people. Contracting and doing our annual maintenance, I mean, we were spending three thousand dollars. Prior to twenty fourteen, so the five thousand dollars didn't seem like an unreasonable amount to me for an annual fee to up. To do the updates and what that does, it, they go through every deed. That's recorded for that year.
Right. Then update the magic.
And then update the maps. Um, yeah, so.
With with new owners and.
So do we make a motion to accept the. C A I Technologies Proposal?
Yes.
So move.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, alright, ask for signatures.
You said that was already discussed at town.
It was voted at town meeting to use those COVID funds.
Which covers the first year plus.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
And the guy came out and did a, did a really good.
It's a month, it's a, they pay by the, by the month, by deliverable, if I remember.
Payment schedule is in here, it's in three, it's in three increments.
Like, eh, like.
Year one was, I guess they're all the same, each year is eighty-nine thousand two hundred.
What's the date?
The man came out, I'll call his name, and gave a really good, um, I'm sorry.
Ren Weston.
Yeah, and gave a really good um talk to us about. Explained to us. What's going on, it's really interesting.
I didn't read it all, but I I skimmed enough of it to understand what they're going to do, it's kind of a cool. Cool thing they're gonna do, but I need to educate myself on the background.
Oh, absolutely, me too, I, yeah, I don't, definitely don't speak the language. But I'm learning.
About like the culverts, um, culverts, we have the road name and then the nearest telephone number. Tell us where the culvert is.
Oh, well, that's handy.
Yeah.
Should call Lauren.
Okay, Marjorie. I have something I wanted to ask her, so I was waiting for reporting numbers.
Do you wanna go ahead?
Well, if she wants to leave, that's fine, but she might just as well stay the rest of the meeting.
We still need to, we don't need to do it tonight, we still need to uh appoint a representative to the Maine Islands Coalition. Or I've asked a couple of people and I can't really find anybody, if you. Know anybody, the Maine's Islands Coalition may meet quarterly at the Island Institute. Uh, I was co-chair for years back in the day. Um, and they discuss uh island issues. A variety of things, they also meet with uh state legislators and talk about legislation that's significant to the islands. Um, I don't know, if you can think of anybody that might want to get involved with that.
Who's gonna call again?
Maine Islands Coalition.
Who, take it right. Who was the last person that was on there, was Gabe and before, or it was?
Andy, I think.
Andy, yeah. Um, Gabe had recommended. Uh, like Shelby or Catherine Fleely or.
I asked.
You asked Samantha Thompson, she wasn't interested. Spelled it, had anybody talked to those two women?
Not Shelby, I asked.
Catherine was something. Okay, keep that on my mind, since we have such a. Uh, high turnout for committee. Everybody's clamored.
I mean, it's only breaking down the door.
It is only quarterly and I think you could do it through Zoom.
Oh, yeah, um, I think that was an option, but just. Okay, alright.
Um, just to let you know that um they're gonna have a concert, Castle Bay. I'm not familiar with that, Castle Bay Concert at the Bandstand on July twenty-second. I didn't feel like there would be any objection, so I told them that it was fine, you know. I'm just letting you know.
I'm saying they were string. No, it's just two, it's a husband and wife.
That's right.
Yeah, they're good, they're they're pretty cool.
Um.
Oh, I think so.
Also, just to let you know on um. June twenty-seventh, we had a really good meeting with representative, oh, you know, all kinds of dignitaries here. We had representatives from M B R C and that's our, the funding agency for the second round of our downtown project. There were people from Maine Department of Economic and Community Development, Congresswoman. Congresswoman Shelley Pingeri's office, Midcoast Council of Governments, the Island Institute. Uh, Rick Latimer was here from North Haven, Gabe and Jim Knowlton, the Harbor Master and myself were also there. We went to the Fisherman's Co-op and uh had a uh tour and talked with Roxanne Tolman quite a bit. And it was really just uh the purpose of this group coming out and the meeting was just to give all of these people an idea of what our. What our struggles are, what our needs are, especially infrastructure-wise, I mean, these are the people that uh will help us. Uh, obtain grant funds, I mean, the co-op is looking at some significant infrastructure expenses. Expenses, the town is gonna have to replace that crib work right next to the town lope and ramp. If you notice that crib work there, it's rotting, that's our responsibility, that will eventually have to be replaced. The downtown project will address a lot of what we need to do, but there's, there's always a need, especially with sea level rise. And so it was a, I thought it was a really good meeting and a way to. Uh, really show. Um, what we have and what the needs are gonna be in the future. I just wanted to let you know about that meeting. Um, I also had been, uh, Matt Eddie from Midcoast Council of Governments, which we are a member of. Um, he has been coming out and helping the Planning Commission uh with great success in terms of. Uh, developing our land use ordinance amendments, it hasn't been amended since two thousand nine. Uh, and. Many things come up over the years and. You know, in my experience, it's usually every few years that you need to go back to town meeting. And make some amendments due to things that had come on, come up with the planning board or uh various issues. So it's been since two thousand nine and the Planning Commission is very anxious to um take some amendments to town meeting. But Matt Eddie uh has been very successful uh working with the Planning Commission and he is asking if the. Selectmen are interested in doing a workshop on strategic planning. Uh, where we have two new members, thought it was a, it would be a good opportunity to work with the board. Uh, to talk about, you know, what, what you would like to see. And what the board would like to accomplish with the town. I mean, I know that we have a lot on our plate with the downtown project in the next few years. But um, I know that planning is not my expertise, I'm more on the financial side. Um, but I understand that it's important. Uh, you know, we, um, before I got here, the downtown uh master plan was written and. You know, it's, it was a great accomplishment and we have that to look at for planning. But there's other things that the town needs, so. I'm just asking if it's something that you might be interested in, or if maybe you would like to have Matt Eddie come and talk to you about what. What is strategic planning and what, for instance, he might, um, how he might facilitate that process.
Yeah, I think, and he's.
He's good, he's, he's, I like him.
You know, we're, we're, we're not professional planners.
Right. And neither am I, it's not my expertise.
So anything, you can get somebody with the, some type of expertise that could pass on a little bit of knowledge is always a takeaway to. Uh, just a matter of coordinating it with everyone and 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 they can work, but yeah, definitely.
Well, why don't I just begin the conversation with him and, you know, maybe he could work out coming to a meeting sometime. Uh, to just talk about it, let's start those conversations, okay? Um, I don't know if you remember or uh I knew Donald about that. Doctor Jonathan Busco and the Medical Center came and they. Um, asked about. Uh, supporting a grant agreement, well, anyway, they, they did get this grant. Uh, this is a um. Related to health issues, do you remember?
vaguely, I don't even remember the, the doctor's name. He met with us?
Yes, it was the video, it was Zoom, they were, it was a meeting, basically they're asking for us to just. Look at it with no obligation at the time.
So he's coming out on the thirty-first. And um. I'm gonna meet with him and um Cam and um. The um. Ryan, the ambulance and, you know, he's gonna have some questions, he was hoping that the selectmen. Um, would be available, but I'll, I can email with more details about that when it gets closer.
He just here for that day?
Yes. I can email you the details, um. And I didn't get it ready in time because I didn't, I didn't get some information, but at the next meeting. Uh, we're gonna do that discontinuance of Sailor's Way as a town way, as a town road. Um. It's a discontinued, what?
I don't, what road is it?
Sailor's Way. Oh, okay.
Beckers that way.
Yeah.
There you go.
Um.
Yeah.
It seems like two years ago, they were here asking us to take it back on, you know, they wanted us to, to have it as a town road. And now they want us to dis-discontinue it.
I don't know what happened.
So I don't understand.
They moved.
So they wanted us to have the. Take care of the road when they were building, but now they've done, they don't want us to bother with it anymore, I see.
Which is very difficult, anyway.
We put anybody in it?
I don't disagree.
What's that? If we put any funds in this road?
No, I don't believe so.
Just we, we have to plow it.
Right.
Which is.
Yeah.
It's the ends, the ends of the earth finally.
It's the end of the earth and it's uh really tight.
This ledge, very narrow.
There's two trees just before the ledge that you can't get the plow and a wing through, it's gotta be the pickup.
Yeah.
That barely gets through and then often when you get down to the end where we have to turn around, there's no place to turn around.
Right.
But then trucks, you have to back, follow back out.
Oh, God.
Wow.
Yeah.
Is there any downside to this?
No, not at all, it's just, I was just questioning the fact that we had this thing to do about we, that we had to. Take it, a town road again because of a culvert that had been put in twenty-eight years ago and. Now we, and we went through the whole thing and now it's like, no, they don't want it anymore, so they want us to abandon it, which is fine.
Millie is fine with that.
So.
Two thumbs up.
Yep. Well, that's.
You sure you don't wanna call that?
So when you get that. Anyway, that'll be on the next, yeah, we'll sign it. Yeah, we'll talk about that, you know, at that meeting. Anything else, Marjorie?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, report of members. Leslie, you said something about a dog.
Yep, I did. I would like to come up with a town ordinance. That says no dogs at Fourth of July. Because.
I don't disagree, yeah.
Every year. Regardless of whether it's foggy or raining or whatnot, it's. Too hot for dogs to be down there, there's dog fights. There's people dragging their dogs behind them because they're exhausted. And barking and I'm tired of it and I think we should have an ordinance.
Again, who's gonna.
Ordinance too, how many permits have we sold?
Tell you that. Fourth of July Committee, it was a year term this year and it was supposed to stay within the lines. Couple of the members of the Fourth of July Committee did a great job leasing and just saying.
Get back.
I'm sure they'd be happy to say.
Well, that's. If we can do, yeah, to have a collaboration between. Us and the Fourth of July Committee, I mean, that's one of the things like when we were talking about the flea market, you gotta have. Somebody from both sides that wanna collaborate.
Well, I feel like every year, the Fourth of July Committee goes out of its way to say, leave your dog home. And nobody listens and there are dogs everywhere.
Why would you take a dog for a race?
And I remember one year.
Irons, they cry.
Yeah, I remember one year, there was a huge dog fight in the parking lot, little kids around, it just, it's not a place for it at all.
So, Millie, you will take that to the Fourth of July Committee?
Okay, good.
And.
See if it works or not.
So, because I agree, I mean, I had.
We asked now on Facebook on us.
Yeah.
On our page, that people leave their dogs at home, but.
I just think something more concrete needs to be put in place so that as a selectman, I can say. Here it is, here it is, take your dog home. And.
And I'd be happy to ask people to leave the parking lot. As long as we had it.
Okay. Alright. Okay, Millie, I have a question about, um, again, back to the uh. Flea market in particular, um, about cones, do you have a lot of. Uh, cones that we could offer to put along the sidewalk or can you, could you place them out there on Saturday morning? Is that, I mean, what, what is that kind of a hassle? I'm sorry?
Which sidewalk?
Well, by the. Slide hole and the. I mean.
It would be hard on everybody's day off for me to get somebody to go in there.
Yeah.
That's a big ask, um, especially this, I mean.
I know.
Um.
Or are there cones that can be long?
Rather than cones, I would suggest using some of the. Rather than cones, I would suggest using some of the, some of the uh little. I don't think, um, little signs that. Will go up areas. They're just little barriers that could go up if somebody were to.
Like sawhorses.
I mean, I think that that's something that should be on whoever's running the flea market.
Yeah, but they, yeah.
Exactly.
They don't walk away, that's the problem.
But um, what about just taking? You like yellow, do not cross tape and going from. The cannon up to days. Howards, you know, and wrapping around. I don't know, there has to be some solution to.
Once again, I think that's something maybe we ask the.
I think I, I have before and it didn't really go well. Yes, gone.
Would I, I would suggest that we do like we talked about earlier, let's put a couple of no packing signs up. Then get Matt to show up on a, next Saturday when they have it, walk around and advise people you can't pack here. And in the future, we will have to do something, but in the meantime, I agree with Lad. When someone's having an event like that, they, they have some responsibility. And if it get really nasty, I'm sure we could put a stop to the whole thing, which we don't wanna do. But I think we gotta make sure that we get some response from the people organizing it.
I don't think we can put parking.
What's that?
Don't think we can put parking, no parking signs there.
Yeah, so I think one, one weekend of the co-op going around and, and saying that should.
Yeah.
Should help.
Well, I guess we need to engage um with. Kathy and Lonnie and, and just ask them if they have people, you know, there, is there a committee? Or is it just one person that runs the entire event? And um, see.
We don't have anything to need.
See what they said.
By the packing ordinance. That says we, I mean, there would have to be a new ordinance for packing, for the parking signs there.
There had been no parking signs there.
For the main street park in front of the church?
Yeah.
Right in front of the church.
There was about twelve of them right in a row, all the way down the point. And they all disappeared. But they were all there and they were on the side of the road where the bands stand. They were all on that part of the street. This was a few years ago, I mean, before COVID.
Should pull up on those, if you have to pull onto the sidewalk, uh.
Right.
You should know, that's not a packing spot.
And, and I think the thing was is that because people were parking on both sides of the street, the fire truck, the ambulance, it was impeding them. Being able to get through. And so there were a whole bunch of no parking signs that were put up.
Window when you're trying to get to a flea market.
So, well, you know.
All right, well, let's see what we can. Can do, I don't know.
Find out if Kathy, if there's more than just Kathy that runs the flea market. There's, maybe they would have some input. I mean, they're dealing with the same thing that we're all talking about.
Right.
You know, it's their customers, their, and their, their, their vendors. That are dealing same issues that we're talking about here and it's safety issue, or like you said, with the ambulance and fire trucks or something happens, we need to get through. They could have a, an emergency at their event, then.
Right.
Emergency services we need to get to. Uh, so they sh- there should be a little bit of leverage there so we can initiate some cooperative. Conversation to try to make this a better situation for everybody.
I think just producing some. Uh, for lack of a better description, you know, like political signs. That they just have a little spike that you push in. Um, on Chabie, when we had events, but we didn't want people to park in particular places. We would just, you know, just every few feet. Put in one of those, just no parking. Uh, it's just, it's not a cone, it's just. It's a, I, the only way I can describe it is like a, like, like a political sign.
Yeah.
The Fourth of July Committee does pink, no parking.
But these are something that you can stick in the.
E- e- even a sign that says flea market parking in front of the swap shop.
So is that something?
Direct people away from.
Could order.
I mean, I don't, you can order anything.
No, I'm just saying, is that something that we should buy? And put there and then pick, but then we have to pick them up and sway.
Something we ask. The town buys anything for their event.
No, but still, the no parking could be used in a lot of places.
Well, I, I think, I mean, this, I think this, this, this event is. In it, it's, it's a good thing for the community.
Oh, yeah.
As a general rule, there are a lot of people, the small businesses and vendors that, that work in this event and it, it's a good thing. It's a draw, but I think that we have concerns. Safety concerns that we need to address for the people who are managing the event. And they need to, we, we can use that as leverage to get them to the table to talk about what we can do to make their event. A safer environment for everybody. Uh, not just the people that go to their event, but the people who are trying to work within the community on that day and travel the roads.
So who do we suggest that, um. Gets in contact with, um. Hands.
So it's Kathy Morton that we need to get in touch with?
To start. It might just be her.
Right.
Don't know.
Okay.
Contact or ask her if there is a committee and if there is, would it be possible to?
Talk to them.
Talk.
Yeah, I mean, expressly we have concerns about parking and, and traffic flow and.
Well, we're great when, uh.
Things that could fall under.
We can make any. All right, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
Our next meeting is when?
The twenty fifth.
I am not going to be here. I am going to a concert the twenty fifth.
What concert?
That's not. So. You just wanna have the meeting without me? Do you wanna bump it?
Nope, we're gonna have the meeting.
Well, already then.
We can have a forum without you.
Yes, I know.
Here, I'm trying not to have events planned on Tuesday.
I had no control over when this event happened because I have nothing to do with the concert venues.
You've given plenty of notice to let us know you're not gonna be here.
Yeah, and I bought the tickets in March, April, so.
Okay.
I will not be here.
Nope.
Okay.